Put a regular fence out there and only lock it if the emergency department decides let's get a little bit of a certain.
Really?
Well, we need to raise out of the community.
You really do.
Honestly, they only need it for emergencies, but a regular, nobody else is trying to drive.
No, he wants to drive on Main Street. That gets tore up and all those people come around.
I know.
The worst thing is there's no gate there. People are gonna, people who live over here, they're gonna come over, they'll turn up Main Street and drive right down. That's no good. We can't, that can't be a regular in now.
The Delta is.
Yeah.
That's why the other, the other sub-conditions on the front. Why the Delta, which is good. Is there gonna have two bridges?
Well, they're, yeah, they put the bridge in when we come out.
So this is for the other.
That's a big, big, good. That would be a good, that would be a second way out of here.
We're supposed to look at that. I don't know, some old colored glasses, something in place, but we're just going to keep it as.
For the trunks or not?
No, it's for, it's the, it's the city people.
Curtis is tonight, you have the introductions yet?
No, I haven't seen anything. I think that's gone to the, there's a new.
Let me know what is your answer.
Which one's that?
Number six and four.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay. Oh, okay. Okay.
I got a question.
Yes.
So you're gonna have an entrance off Red Hawk Road and not go up Branks?
Yes, there's three lots coming along Red Hawk and three on the ranch.
Yeah.
And we.
That's the only question.
Remember, we updated the, when it was last meeting, I think, and we don't, we don't have to, at the zone change phase, we don't have to worry about that.
Right, that's not exactly.
Right, there's work about that.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
I am too.
It doesn't mean people can't express it, but that's, at the zone change phase, that's not.
Right.
Yeah.
Frankly, no, I'm pretty sure he asked.
Yeah. You already called tough on me.
But, but, yeah, the one thing that we already do is not, is not change that. Yeah. I'm not preaching to you that. You have a hybrid in his house.
Yes.
I'm hybrid.
Yeah.
I'm hybrid house.
But I can't, I can't get any insurance.
Branks, so this is the one. I mean, I mean, sport is contract, you tell them to make money while it's on, and gals like, no, it's a six. So they're making us tie in and do another loop to tie ten up there to build more pressure for those two hybrids, and they're putting on, this guy's doing this a lot.
Richard, we thought it was an eight inch when we went to build, found out.
Dale told me.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dale told me. So, so we, yeah, this, this guy has to put a loop in, it's mother stuff, to build more pressure and more flow, and he's got to do much stuff to fix that, even though he didn't put it in, but he's gonna be stuck to build to fix it, so.
Okay.
All right.
Surviving.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You get a little extra workload with John going?
Uh, yeah, well, especially now that Michelle's pretty much gone now too, yeah.
Where's John? John's gone, Michelle's like.
He's on military, he's just through the end of the month, I believe.
Yeah, for another month or so.
He just had a daughter, too. Wow.
He must be in the reserves, is that what it is?
Um, I think so, I think he's in National Guard. Yeah.
Even while that happened, it's gonna be Dale, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a channel that's gonna put together a, something we log, this joint.
Gates, yeah, gates, gate seat.
Yeah.
This is true for now.
I don't, but the office isn't locked, I want to.
Get charged.
You're charged.
I'm charged.
It'll already, it'll, everybody from water player.
Oh, good.
All that stuff, they're gonna sign up, all that stuff. All right, can we get started?
No.
I'd like to call this, um, meeting of the planning commission to order, and let's begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right. So let's call the roll, who's here? Lee Braylon is here.
Janet France here.
Alan Angel is here.
Wendy Jordan.
Richard Fisher's here.
We're all here, all right, welcome, everybody. Um, we have some minutes to look over, we're getting very close to being caught up, our, our goal for some months now has been to get our minutes ahead of, from last meeting ahead of this meeting. We're getting really close.
We're pretty much there, we have the minutes from last meeting.
Awesome. Good, yeah, nice work. So, um.
The last one's on yet.
Yeah, yeah, you've got a couple here yet.
Just one, oh, yeah, yeah.
Just the one, I guess, yeah. So I'd be, I'd like to, um, call for motion to approve the, the, the three sets of minutes, but before we do that, does anybody have any commissions or corrections they'd like to identify? When you're always at your red pen, any? No, we're good?
Sure, we stepped on your edits a while ago.
Yeah, yeah, well, I knew I updated my last name, has two L's officially, so it's not confusing me with the other type of game. Let's be honest, nobody copies me.
Why not?
Anybody wanna, um.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the managers, September 12, 2020, February 3, 2021, and March 3, 2021.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any discussion on that? No? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so that passes, thank you to staff for getting those minutes accurate, awesome. We're on schedule now, so we will expect by the time, maybe not the time we have the next meeting, because we actually put a, a quick little special-ish type meeting for next week, um, on the agenda, just primarily just to handle requests that we got from the Chamber of Commerce, and Hurricane wants to put Banner out here, and apparently we have to approve that, so. If they wait till our next official meeting, their, their event will be long gone, so.
When is that?
That's next Wednesday, the same time.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll make that as short as possible. And if, if by some miracle you get our minutes done by then, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, I'll try.
We cannot be ahead of time. All right. Are there any conflicts of interest for any of the other agenda items on the?
No.
No? All right, we will note that one of our commissioners represents one of the applicants, but we won't call that a conflict, all right? All right. Um, we're gonna have a public hearing on a zone change, parcel AV 1365-G from RE 10 to RE 5. Like to open that public hearing now. Um, is the applicant here for this 1365?
No, I'm representing.
Oh, you're representing, all right. Do you wanna give us a quick rundown of what's, what's being done, and, yeah, you can do it from, from the audience, if you have in mind, and then if anybody has comments, now your chance.
Uh, Mr. Lonsberry purchased the land and is looking to subdivide that 30 acre parcel into six five acre lots, which is pretty much consistent with what's up in that area, so. He'll be doing his road improvements and water lines and a few things like that, storm drainage that's badly needed in the area, so.
Um, and the applicants are aware that this is the first in a several step process there has to be actual lot split, so, yeah, okay. Just making sure. Anybody have any comments?
We have all the water hookups we need for that.
We have the water hookups we need. There, that's.
This is a zone change.
Down, down, down the line, okay.
Debbie, you have a public comment?
Nothing.
Sure. That way everybody can see your beautiful mug on camera.
Richard, I have a question for you, being that you're the representative, I know it's only the zone change, but how's, I heard you saying something about three lots off of Red Hawk and three lots off of Ranch? Where off of Ranch are they coming? Because that's a public easement, but it's our road, it's not a dedicated road?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, I don't have those drawings yet, he's just getting a zone change, and that's the game plan.
Okay.
So once that gets done, and they present the construction drawings, we'll know that.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. Anybody else? Anybody online? All right, let's close that public hearing. We also have a, a public hearing for a similar request, this is a zone change request for parcel AV 1311-U from a single family to RE 10. Um, they could open that public hearing now. Is the applicant here? Yeah? Do you wanna give us a quick rundown on what you got in mind over there?
Sure. Um, so, I bought the land a year ago, and I guess it's zoned already for single family, and the city told me I need to change that zoning to, I think it's called residential estate, in order to build a house and a barn on it, so that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, all right.
How many acres are there?
Twenty.
Twenty. So you're doing an RE 10, right?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any comments about that? Yeah?
Um.
Can you come on up and shoot a name for the record and?
Because nobody knows her.
Nobody knows her.
Margaret Osowski, 102 for West Little Pinion. Did they, on this lot change, or, you know, when it was split, it wasn't split properly? Did that, all that paperwork ever come in? They went to the county and split it, and the town never signed it off on it, so did all that paperwork come in?
I'm not sure what you mean by paperwork.
Well, what I mean is, when you split a lot, you, you have to do it through the, the town, not the county, you don't go down to the county to split the lot, you do it through the town.
Depends on when it was done.
It was done last year.
If it was done last year, then it had to go through the town.
Yes, that's right. And I wanna know, was it ever done, was, was the record of survey ever signed off by the town, and, um, were the needs ever?
Lot splits were done by Marty.
Huh?
Lot splits were done by Marty.
Well, I know, but here he is, wanting a zone change, and if it wasn't done properly, that, that lot split would be illegal, an illegal lot split, and also, all the general plan map, there's a proposed, um, um, road through that, that whole lot. Both, well, he's got 20, and I think somebody else, that, what's her, Wilson, Lilac Wilson, she has, I think, 15, and so all through that, that 20 and 15 acres is a, is, you know, through the middle of it is there's, there's a road. If you would like me to present that to you.
We, we can see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I do have a question with that, so, when you bought your lot, was it already split in a 20, or did you buy a 20 acre section, or did you buy a bigger parcel just put up between other people?
The previous owner had to do the split in order to sell me the 20 and the remaining parcel to Wilson.
And so, when you got yours, obviously there was some kind of record of survey, because you have a separate 20 acre parcel.
Yes.
Yours, yours isn't included with theirs, obviously, right?
Yeah.
So there's something that was done?
Yes, I've given the, the town the survey, everything.
That was done.
I don't believe it was signed off by the town, though.
So, yeah, that's a good point, so what we'll do is, because this is an application for a zone change, and he already owns the property, we can ask the town council if we decide to approve this, to make sure that it, that all the paperwork is proper.
I know, a question.
But right now, we're just at the zone change. Yeah?
Couple things. Richard Osowski, 1024, Little Pinion, Wayne. I have some pictures here. Pictures of where, may I give them to you?
Yeah, please, yeah.
This is from my property, and one of them is of a doghouse than what's on this property. This is off of my driveway. So if you look at the pictures there, um, we all know who Ben Beasley was. In a letter he had dated, uh, May 27, I'll put this in record, the town has it, they sent it out, 2020, he says, "It has been brought to our attention that the property AV 1311-U was separated into two parcels by a warrant deed on April 23, 2020 by Washington County Records, such and such. This warrant deed created a new lot, AV 1311-B, such a separation with explicit consent of the Town of Apple Valley is considered an illegal lot split. This happened as I was code enforcer, and Ben and I talked about it quite often. And according to the ex-mayor at the time, we had a conversation too, as code enforcer, and he explained to me that, not a big deal, he'll just come in and sign some papers. Well, the problem with that is, it is a big deal, because that was two months ago. Now, also, I filed some nuisance complaints on it, and Mr. Betels, I met with him for two and a half hours yesterday. What he told me, here's one nuisance complaint, what he told me in this two and a half hour meeting, that the nuisance complaint that I have here, um, let's see, it's dated February 25th, actually, and on that nuisance complaint, here it is, yeah, okay, on that nuisance complaint that I filed, yeah, let's see, there's two of them. So the first one that I filed was on February 17, 21, and what I wrote down is because, without a building permit of some nature, you can't move on what you see in the pictures, the, the campers and the shipping container, and there's even some forms being built.
Richard, is this before he bought it or after?
After he bought it. After he bought it, he moved it in, and I, I looked right down on top of it, so I filed the nuisance complaint on it. Uh, action taken, I mean, read the interest in the action taken. Taylor wrote red tag, and first notice of violation given to 1721. Ex-mayor, he got a little upset at the time, and he comes stumbling out there, and he wrote down, right under Taylor, and he wrote down, "I've talked with Jorgensen and the area for 30 days to complete his building permit." In the code, it says nowhere, they're gonna give you 30 days to put whatever you want on a lot while you're getting a building permit. I got lots, I'm gonna move all my stuff to my lot, but my neighbors wouldn't let me do that. That is the first problem. That gate that Marty, that road that Marty's talking about, he put up a gate, there's a gate across there. I don't know, I guess he's okay. We all met with the mayor, all the six people from the residents of Gooseberry. In that meeting, when Sean Guzman and the rest of them were there, Dale, John, and Marty, he said, "I'm gonna give them 30 days." That 30 days expired on March 17. I wrote a nuisance complaint in, then it gets really interesting. So on this nuisance complaint, I just cited the same thing, 30 days is up, and the ex-mayor said after 30 days, he's gonna give them another 30 days. Well, meanwhile, the ex equipped, so as of today, I turned in a nuisance, well, I came in to get the answer to the nuisance complaint, I turned on March 17 as to another 30 days. And they called Betels up, and Betels wouldn't give them the 30 days extra. So, uh, he's actually there without anything being approved, and, and anybody could do that, it's my land, I can do as I please, is the attitude, so, uh, they need to put another 30 days on it.
That's true.
And when I talked to Betels, here's what Mr. Betels told me in the meeting yesterday. He said, "If he doesn't show up," this is word for word, "and come in with a set of plans for his house and whatever else, then we're gonna have him move his property out of there, he can't have it there."
May I make one statement real quick?
Yeah.
So my, my assumption would be that, right now, by doing a zone change, because he can't get a permit until he does the zone change, so he can't start getting a permit to start building this house, so he's here to get the zone change, so he can get a permit, so he can move the ball forward.
Maybe he should've got his.
That's, that's where he's at right now, I, I would assume.
Where he's at is, he should've got a lot split through the town.
Well, he didn't do that, somebody else did.
It's still his property, he still needs to get the lot split.
He's not splitting anything, somebody else already did it.
I know.
Before he bought it.
It's illegal, it's, it's illegal. He's still gotta have, you can say it's illegal, but it is.
It's nothing to do with me, I'm just, he bought the land, somebody else did it.
Okay, you were talking to somebody else.
Yeah, and so he needs a lot split himself. It's still listed as a U, not a B, so, because the U was the whole 30 acres, and now it's into a B, and, and, and the other guy went and got the lot split to Washington County too, so I guess everybody can go to Washington County and get lot splits and not worry about Apple Valley.
Yeah, they're not supposed to.
Well, this is the problem right here we got, so it, it ended into a big mess, and, and, and I don't think it needs to, okay, let's, now, I don't know what, he just said what he's gonna do. The difference between single family and residential, how would that affect us? It is his land, he bought it, once he changes it to RE, let's see what he can do with RE, and why you want, when you buy property, I buy property knowing what it's designated for, I don't buy property and then say, "I don't like what I bought, so let's go ahead and change it to residential." Residential opens up a whole big can of worms. I live in residential. First of all, you can, on, on single family, you can't have the large horses or the large animals, so he wants the large animals, okay. On single family, I believe, a steel building or something of that nature is not allowed. On residential, they removed it all from that, and now you can have a steel building on residential, and they did that because of the shipping containers. I wrote five new grammar requests today on this particular issue and filed them, and, and just because of this, the shipping container, there's codes for shipping containers that says you need to have where they're gonna be located, you need the color, there's a lot involved behind the scenes of this. So residential will open up a big can of worms, 20 acres, so on residential, how many horses and cows can you have on 20 acres? More than four, I'll guarantee you that. So if you buy a property that's zoned, single family, and then you move a bunch of stuff on it, you know, what you see in the pictures, and then all of a sudden, well, I'm gonna change it to residential, why did you buy it that way anyway? It just causes a headache for you guys, and it causes a headache to what I'm looking down on.
Gotcha. All right, thank you so much for your comments, appreciate it. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I do have to say one, one other thing.
All right.
Okay, on, on your, your public hearing notice, you have the lot listed as AV 1311-U. AV 1311-U is not his property unless he purchased that property from Ms. Wilson.
It's, well, you're, you're listed as the owner of the property, right? I think I saw a, I think I saw a, what's it called, a deed of reconvenance or something like that, what it's called.
And all the surveyors.
So why do you, why do you guys have it listed as U instead of E?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean.
There's confusion between, and I've been trying to get that right, but it just keeps going back to the, so there's an old parcel number for the entire big parcel, and they assigned me a new number when, when the land was split, but for some reason, that old number keeps getting attached to mine.
There's a legal.
So it's probably a county.
The legal description describes your property, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a physical.
Maybe because it wasn't done properly.
There, there, I get you. It's all the property, though.
I, I'm not saying it's his fault, I'm saying that there's a problem with it, and it needs to be fixed before you do the zone change.
Why do, why do you think it needs to be done before we do the zone change? Tell me that.
Because it's an illegal lot split.
But he owns the property.
I don't have to argue with you, Alan, okay, just.
No, help me understand, Margaret, what's, if he owns the property?
Because, because if, if you, if you go down to the county and you do the lot split incorrectly, it's not a valid lot split, correct?
Yeah, Marty did.
I have, no, Marty did not do it. Whoever owned the property prior to him buying it, went to the county, they did a lot split. It was brought to the town's attention a year ago.
Okay.
And I have no idea if Marty ever fixed it or anything, we, myself and another person has, has grammar several times to see if the paperwork ever came in, and we never get an answer, it's, it's, it's in the process or whatever. So to me, you guys are, are giving a zone change on an illegal lot, or, you know, illegal lot split.
We have voted on it, yeah.
You know, I put this in submission, Ben and I went over and over this, and right here in Ben's writing, dated, uh, May 27, 2020, he called an illegal lot split, and he said, "Until they come to the town," he wrote illegal lot split, "and until they can come to the town and get it straightened out and fix all the numbers and everything," he said, "They're not gonna do anything." As soon as Ben left, wham-o.
Well, a little complicated.
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Okay, so, I came in and I talked to the town about this lot split, and I left, they said they'd look into it, and later on, I received this email right here, March 23 of 21. "Hey, Jordan, I had spoken to you a little bit about your property and the law split that was done. The initial law split was done illegally by the previous owner. The mayor had caught the illegal split at the time and reached out to the owner. They informed the owner that if she submitted an application and paid the filing fee, then they would approve the law split without any other requirements. Therefore, your law split is verified and legal through the Town of Apple Valley. I've reached out to the company who updates our maps and have asked them to update that parcel on the Apple Valley map to show the law split. I just wanted to reach out to you and inform you of the situation. Your law split is complete, and the only thing left is the zone change, which will be voted upon 7. Sorry for the confusion, have a great day, Taylor Pledger."
That's right.
So. Do we have the?
We have the application and we have the check that they paid, and so, when this was brought up, I asked Marty what their decision was, he told me that him and Ben had decided on that, so we do have the application filled out, and we do have the fee that they paid, so that's correct.
So right now, that's the description.
Yeah, and we have a record of survey.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments? Thank you.
Unclear.
Boris does.
We need to change you. That's her, that's right here, that's his. That's all they need to change, that's all.
Who has a question?
Boris does.
Boris.
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 Exactly.
You're muted. I think you guys are muted. I have some mutts.
Boris, can you unmute yourself?
Unmute yourself. Don't get near.
I'm unmuted.
Okay.
We have.
Hello.
Yep. How about it?
I'm unclear where the paperwork is that supposedly exists that approved that law.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm, I'm wondering where the paperwork is, it's supposed to be filed at the county if there's an approved law.
You have that. Yeah, um, I, I don't know anything about that part, I'm pretty sure they didn't, because it was already filed with the county before it came to us, I don't think they think it needed to do it again, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
It's not filed with the county.
Town has the paperwork, and apparently hasn't made it to the county yet, there's some discrepancy about whether or not it needs to, so, but that's a, it's a town staffing issue. Um, it does sound like there has been a, a couple of, um, issues of things falling through the cracks in the transition between Ben and John, and also Marty's disappearance in the meantime, so, um, but it does, we've got the word from the town that we have a completed application with the application fee that satisfies the law split.
And the description, label description.
Uh, you gotta unmute yourself again.
I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
Got you.
The applications for AV thirteen eleven U, he does not own that property.
That's a type of.
Yeah, I I from what we're what we're understanding now, that's a that's a typographic error. We're gonna, we we get to the point where we make a motion to approve, we're gonna change that to a V. Is it he he actually.
But also change all the maps and the mailing.
We may uh may need, we may need to to table it for another round. Yeah, that's true. It would have, it would have, it would have been sent out to all the neighbors, right?
Yeah, yeah, but we use the Washington County's websites to formulate that mailing list. And theirs is accurate for this property because the law split was already done through that.
But if we tell, if we if we announce to the neighbors that that a wrong parcel number.
Oh, right, right.
That's our fault. So I think we probably.
Yes, your mail definitely.
We table this and don't approve it tonight, it it delays the remedy for what you're you're asking for. You realize that, right? I mean, the remedy here is for him to get his own change.
And get a permit.
And get a permit and get going. Because quite frankly, this is in the long term. Now, one of the things that's a little bit awry from what you were describing earlier was that a lot of times people do buy land that zones something, but on the long term map, it zones something else. This falls into that category. This is, this is allowed to have RE five on it. He's asking for RE ten. So as long as he follows all the rules, which we there's a minor discrepancy between a U and a B.
That's a big discrepancy, not a liar.
A U and a B, just one one minor letter.
I know, but it's about in in the legal, legal sense on on what the law's.
That's it delay a whole lot for you to get your remedy. You understand, before he starts getting that.
Well, the whole remedy is he shouldn't have put anything on that lot to begin with.
I understand. That's not a planning commission issue.
I know, but I'm just saying, you're you're trying to say that it's a remedy. But the problem was, he already did something that he shouldn't have done.
I understand. Where we are, so from here forward, we look for remedies, right? We don't look for blame. We look for remedies. We can, we can, believe me, there's plenty of things that's going on in this town or in the past that we all wish was different.
I'm sorry. It's too bad this continues into the future.
I know, and we're we're trying to resolve that here. And I think the best thing for us, first of all, is there any more comments?
I do have one more comment.
Okay, Forrest, yeah, let's have it. He's got a lot of.
The uh copy of the county record for that parcel has a name crossed out. And that name.
Response to that.
Sorry?
I I emailed you a response this afternoon. I there there was, in fact, the transfer of the deed under under his name. So he owns that property. If you look at your email, I sent you a link to it.
Ask when the date was.
Uh, I don't have my email. Look at, you you can look it up right now. You you have access to your email?
Uh, you're saying. Are you saying it's on my email?
I sent it to you this afternoon, yep.
Let me see.
All right. So while you're doing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the comment section.
And get back to you.
Okay. So that's close. Um, now, it does seem to me that, yeah, if we're gonna have rules, we gotta have rules. So I would suggest, Taylor, we get this whole process redone with the U changed to a V. And if in the meantime, the town can somehow get this lot split split done accurately at the county level, that would be lovely.
Yeah, I'll I'll.
I'd love to not be at the same place we are next.
Alan?
Another, another next meeting.
Okay, I think a motion we table this till.
You ready, Will?
Oh, I think we need to have a correction campaign. It'll form.
Yeah, we got.
States, that's how we get ourselves.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm I'm sorry, we can't do it. We just have some things to correct.
You second, is that your second?
I will.
Maybe we'll second that. All right, so um. Everybody feel a bit about that, you think?
Yeah.
All right, those in favor of tabling this till next uh week one? And 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 in the process of that, implicit in that, Taylor, is that we need to go through the process again.
Yeah.
You need all the paperwork.
All right, so.
So that we can get the kind.
Let's make sure it says V for his property, not U.
Got it.
Please.
So those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All right. Thank you all for your passion about this. We do wanna get these things right. Sorry about where we put you, the position we put you in. It's not your bad that the previous owner did this properly, nor is it probably your fault that the U wasn't a V on that application. I'm gonna guess, but at the time you filled that out, it said U. It's something that updated in the meantime.
Better to you because you won't have any issues.
Yeah. I would suggest that you work as diligently as you can with the town. This isn't necessarily a planning commission issue, but as you can tell, the residents of this town, and you you you'll be happy to probably live here and under these circumstances. When you're a resident, hopefully you'll care as passionately about following the ordinances of the town as everyone else does. So I I'd recommend you try hard to follow the rules. All right, awesome. Um, okay, so we went ahead and had the the action on number seven already. So let's circle back here and have some discussion and possible action on um the the zone change for for um AV thirteen sixty five dash. Wait, is that the one which?
Yes. That's appropriate for the public lands areas, low density.
Yeah, the only, I I again, it's um. It's.
Kent Huesburg.
It's on our, it's on our long term map as as, you know, minimum five acre. It's it's that, so uh just, obviously, there are gonna be some issues with regard to where we're access. That's that's uh at the next phase of the process, but from what I can tell. There's no. Yeah, for sure.
Or you, Kathy?
No, I can't.
No, you.
She knows that.
Only commotion. Are we ready? Kathy, will you approve the zone change for particle AV dash thirteen sixty five dash G from RE ten to RE five? I second.
All right, any discussion on that? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? All right. One extension and four ayes. So that varies as well. You got all that, Taylor?
Yeah.
Okay, so um. Yeah, I'm not sure everybody knows this yet. I don't know how an announcement like this is made, but the town um staff has um begun to do some of our heavy lifting for us, thank goodness, after all this time. And uh there's a, there's a new joint commission uh of of all the people from fire to water and town staff and so on, that are gonna be in the look at applications and make sure that all the, all that they meet all the requirements before they come to us. This is, this is, in my opinion, one of the most lovely developments we've seen in in our commission for a long time.
And something that's done in all the other counties.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, and and we've stepped toward this over time. Um, but now that we actually have formulated this joint commission, uh, they've done their work and uh they have, from what I can tell, signed off on everything with regard to preliminary clap. The last thing I saw in the packet that I still didn't see was a will serve letter. We have that. Anybody know?
For Wells property?
For Wells property.
Okay.
That's the next one we're.
Yep.
Do we know if we have that will serve letter? That was the last item on the checklist that still, there was still a note on there that said will pending. They're they're gonna, they're gonna issue it, but.
Yeah, I I haven't received anything other than the email that was sent down.
Okay.
So if they have it, I just haven't gone and copied the other.
Let's just keep in mind that when we get to the point where we get, we are gonna approve this preliminary clap, that's making. Now, Forrest, this isn't a, this isn't a uh public hearing, but you sent us an email about this. And I honestly couldn't quite decipher what point you were trying to make. Can you? Can you briefly make that point to us here? Unmute.
I'm sorry, I was I was looking at your last email, um, which, by the way, applies to AV thirteen eleven V. So Lillette is the owner of of U. So now, what was your question?
So uh you 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 sent us an email about uh thirteen twenty nine. And I couldn't make sense of it, truthfully. Maybe I'm just uh dense. But can you have, can you further explain what point you were making there?
Yes, uh thirteen twenty nine was uh divided back in December and did not go through the town as was proper. It is an illegal um or what the state would call an invalid subdivision. Um, we shouldn't be talking to people that uh have not gone through the town with their sub, uh with dividing their land.
I think you're talking about something wrong there.
What parcel are you talking about?
No, so, okay, I appreciate your 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 comments. I think what he's saying is that 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 this AV thirteen twenty nine was acreage owned by one individual, one LLC in in Idaho, but they sold out only a section of it. And that that now constitutes this development, this well development.
That that's correct.
Say is that that split wasn't done legally according to the town. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. So I think we're in another similar position. Do you have any knowledge of this?
I I spoke with Marty about it, and he said that we have a legal description that accurately describes that parcel as its own parcel. And so he said that should, um, you know, be defined by meets bounds by that's.
But they didn't go through the lot split.
Not not.
Yeah.
So is this already a separate parcel out of all the land of that other guy in Idaho?
According to the legal descriptions, yeah.
So it was already a separate, so they didn't do a split. They just sold a piece of.
Exactly. So according to the legal descriptions, it's it's defined as its own individual section.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, they didn't do an official law.
But it was, but it was a.
No, it has its own separate legal description. It's it's kind of a weird way of doing it.
We're in another, we're in another situation.
Yeah.
And Alan, Alan, could I, could I comment?
Oh, we have Sean on as well.
Maybe Sean can explain.
Oh, Sean, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Sorry, I I I was just trying to be quiet in the background. That's hard for attorneys.
Appreciate it. Yeah, we don't wanna be in the same position. We just, uh, you, I'm sure you heard that previous discussion.
Yeah, so uh uh the law has, is kind of unclear on how you can do these um lot splits or these um boundary line adjustments. We did some things this legislative session to try to clear that up. But one of the things that we have done and that have been pushed by the legislature and uh in the past few years is to say, okay, we recognize that there are people that do this. We tried to get them to put in the law that they have to come to the city or town every time. But we met huge resistance, even with legislators. So where where the law's geared now is to say, okay, you've done that. But when you come in to develop that, when you make the application, then the town or city can say, you need to put this lot in conformance. Now, if they come in with a lot that in a, in a um subdivision or zoning that requires half acre lots, for example, and they do have a half acre lot, it meets all of our other requirements, then the way the law is geared is for us to go to them now and say, okay, so we will consider your application. But um if there's anything lacking to make this legal to conform to the town, you need to do those things too. So really, um, while I agree with Forrest that they, and I don't know the circumstances, but they may have done it illegally. The way the law is structured is to say, okay, good, they did it illegally. But if there's, if there's a way, if they comply with everything, just get them into, work with them to get them into compliance and move it on because no harm, no fat, right? In a sense.
Yeah, so.
I don't think he was a part of the Zoom when we were talking.
Yeah, no, and and I wanna make it, I wanna make it clear, uh Forrest is right on that. You know, they they probably did not do it legally.
So they they in effect sold off some land. Uh, and there's a legal description of what that land is, but they just didn't come to the town and split that off in a legal sense.
But that town.
Yeah, they, yeah, now, and and I say they may not have done, they, okay, but yeah, it may have been, it may have been done years ago, but it may have not been done legally. But if if it conforms and we can, and we can ensure that, we could still say to someone who comes in with a lot that's not even half an acre. Let's say it's it's um, it's missing a quarter uh of that part, portion of the property. We could say, nope, that is not legal for this zoning. So you gotta go back and figure out a way to get that extra portion of property in order to make it work.
Okay, all right. But what you're saying, Sean, is that we're here now to move forward. We have our preliminary flat to, and we're doing a lot even. But yeah, I I don't see a scenario where we penalize the the current owner developer for something that the previous owner who sold in the land didn't do properly. I do think we gotta remedy that.
Right.
But so I got a question.
That's, that's exactly the point the legislature was making, was don't penalize it.
Yeah, I mean, we are, we already approved the zone change. We, they're, they've already got the preliminary uh plan already, already in front of us. Um, again, I think what we'll do here is we'll have discussion that will say when the, when the, the the town council needs to get a remedy for what happened uh when this, when this lot changed hands. But in the meantime, I don't see any, anything.
Formative.
Film upside for us holding this up.
Right. Former, former feet got missed.
Create any.
Basically where it's at. But also depends on when it was done, because before, if it was done, it was county before it was us. Then we have, we really don't have any say on that either.
It could have been. I mean, what's confusing is that there's a legal description. What's what's frustrating is probably those two, because they're not contiguous. So my guess is they were separate in, but they should have never been given one, one uh parcel. But even so, I can, so, so, so the history I have on it is that they were owned by the same guy, the same names and everything. So the county never gave them a separate number.
Yeah.
But there's other parcels in the area. At one point, it was all one landowner.
Right, right.
And they, and whoever that was, I don't know when, broke it down and broke it down in the section. But these are big tracts of land. I mean, I look at, I mean, when, if it was an acre lot, yeah, that's a subdivision, a lot split. But this is a sixty acre piece of land. So that's, that's kind of. I mean, our, our ordinances do read that you need to come, you need to get through the town's approval to make the, this, this. If you're gonna sell off a chunk of your land, you gotta, that's split. Yeah. So we need to go through that process with the previous owner. Um, and we'll, we'll, we'll test.
Yeah, and can I say, can I say, Alan, that that may not be exactly correct too? Because that that's what I was talking about, the inconsistencies with state law. There are some ways that you can actually do what they did without coming to the town. And so that's why I'd have to look at the facts of it. But we, like you said, we do not wanna penalize the um current property owner. That's what the legislature was concerned about. And so that's when we work with them to get it done.
I did, no, no, nothing we do to 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 slow or stop the process here provides any remedy for something that happened in the past anyway. So I, I agree, Sean. I think let's um, you know, you as our, as our attorney representing the council, hopefully you guys can get together and figure out a retroactive remedy, if there is one. Maybe there isn't. Maybe they, they they did what they did and according to state law, they're allowed to still. But one of the things I wanna, I I, this is a good example of why this JUC is a good idea. Because these kinds of things should be addressed before an application ever gets. We, quite frankly, we should have, I didn't even know about this when we did the zone change. And we, the town did the zone change. So it's a work in progress. Uh, you know, it's the Wild West down here. People have land. They wanna sell it. Sometimes they don't know all the rules. Uh, it's pretty clear in our ordinances that you gotta come to the town and ask for permission to, or go through the process. We don't give you permissions. We don't give you permissions, to go through the legal process. But of course, we have to really dig into those ordinances to know that that's there.
When is this meeting, council? Do they need to bring in next week?
They are, they're, yeah, they're gonna be on Tuesday.
Are we tangled just until they?
No, they don't have anything to do with this.
They don't have anything to do with it.
They would have pointed out that this was a, this was a foul, but they're, the remedy here is, if there's a remedy, Sean may be right, they need to look into the legality of the design. You know, you missed it, you missed it too late, they're still, they're, you know, they might not have done it right, but it's right now.
Yeah.
According to the state law. The time to find these things is when?
Before.
The transactions happen, or prior to that, so.
Or whatever we do in the program, we get.
It's not, it's. So are you here to walk us through the? The, the.
More than happy to. I'll stay, let me have the records, I can have it. I'm Craig Coats with Alliance Consulting, representing Mr. Wells and Livy. Wells on the project. So we've broken down the, the subdivision for, like we showed previously with, you know, pull it up.
Yeah.
So, you laid out.
How many total lots do you have here?
Twenty-five? There's twenty-five lots with the last twenty-six lot being the detention basin area.
They're right there.
They're sitting right there.
Right here. Hold them up there. Oh. So we've got the, the zone requirement for the west half being one acres and the, the east half being two and a half acres for the zone.
Okay, so yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'm, we're.
Do you just wanna take questions, or you wanna walk us through later?
Well, I can walk through what we did, I can kinda remember what, you already heard and haven't heard, so I'll repeat anything again that, that helps. So we're taking a road down the center. Our, our goal is, part of our development agreement is we're going to be paving Rome, Rome Avenue up to the site, in front of the site. We'll be improving the street through the development and then building, we, we're building a secondary access road to the east as well to get to Main Street.
Yeah, we were just discussing that earlier, is this, is this gonna go straight out?
No, it's not.
There's a.
So the easements we have obtained head down the east boundary and then head, or start.
They go back.
It's the east boundary and then heads down south. Runs, runs south and then runs east along the property where we gain the easements for the access.
So it's not straight to say that it runs along the north edge of the, the, the previous owner of this.
It runs on, it splits down the middle. So we obtained easements from the north half, and then the original owner gave us another easement on the south as well. So it goes right down the property line for that road.
Gotcha.
So those are, those are access easements that we obtained for those, those properties. We did try to shift the, the road right on Rome Avenue. We kinda swerved it to the south so that any headlights coming towards the one residence that's on the far south, we tried to mitigate that and pull it down to the south. We've, we've met with the city engineers on the layout and design, and preliminary showed it to them. We haven't submitted officially our construction drawings because we're preliminary platforms, this is approval, submit our drawings to the town for the engineer to review those. We're pulling the water line down. We did meet with, in the JUC, we had discussions with Rod Mills on, on the water availability. He sent us the email letting us know that he thinks he has it, he just needs to verify it. And in the JUC meeting, he told Mr. Wells that he had it, correct?
He said, he said he was working on it, but.
You don't have the actual letter yet.
We don't have the actual letter, no.
But at that, at that meeting, he always saying something about not giving the will serve letter now, like he had been. Because then, before it's decided.
Yeah, okay. I mean, according to our preliminary plat checklist, that will serve letter is one of the requirements.
It was, but they told us they wouldn't give it to us.
That's getting changed.
So it's waited now.
Yeah, that's, that's not supposed to actually happen in any other cities, it doesn't happen until final plat. Because the problem is, is like for us, for instance, there's only, somebody goes available right now until they make that connection on that other water system, right? Or tell somebody to add some more storage stuff to this area. So they're working on those things, there's some projects that are working on those, but if his project comes in right now, there's enough water right now to handle that, that's fine, but if something happens and all of a sudden he loses his funding between preliminary and prime, and, and final plat, all of a sudden he doesn't move forward, but we tied up the will serve letter to his property, the next guy can't have it.
It seems to me that a will serve letter could have a sunset or something.
So, it's supposed to, most cities and what we're gonna be moving to is finally plat is when they have to have that will serve letter. So, because right now they're still doing kind of drawings and all kinds of stuff, so they still can't start construction until the final plat's been approved, which means they can't do it if they don't have a will serve letter. So it's just moving from point A to point B. So that was in the, that was in the, in the.
You, you guys are aware that right along the basically eastern end of the property line is where the long-term plan for
Yep.
Water, the ditch. And so does your, so water, land allow for movement of water over to that and it's, that?
So that ditch cuts off the water that comes onto our property. So our current plan's going to handle the water that's currently coming.
So you don't need, you don't feel the need to move from the detention basin over to that?
No.
Over to that ditch or?
Nope.
River or?
We're gonna have to handle the water that's historically.
You're assuming that, that that long-term remedy's not gonna happen, you're gonna deal with the water.
Yes, we've had to account for that, it's been a difficulty, but we, we've made it work, so, but yeah.
That part they have to do according to state law, so they have to figure that out.
I just wondered if maybe, I mean, you know, like free up.
You know, we, we discussed that option with the engineer, and they basically said, yeah, it just reduces the amount that's coming on us, and yeah, it does reduce, we have to plan for the worst right now by state law, like I said. And so we're planning for that and dealing with it, but we're also knowing that, that somebody will come in and help everything, so.
For sure.
Hopefully the town can get those grants that they told us about in the near future to accommodate some of those items.
I have a retention on the road around my property that I won't need anymore, this ditch area.
It's good, right?
Yeah. Alright. Anything, anybody have any, I'm a little concerned about that will serve letter, but we can, we can. I just, I know, I just am concerned that our current checklist for approving a preliminary plat includes that.
Yes.
And so.
Can you make it a condition?
That's what I'm gonna suggest.
A condition on the, on the, the council makes that decision on that will serve letter.
Because I don't see everything else, because JUC wants everything else, you guys are in line.
We, like you said, we tried to get it, we emailed, we worked with them, they said we won't give it to you.
Sean's wanting to.
Yeah, Sean.
Yes, okay, I agree, you could make that, and you absolutely do wanna make that a condition of approval. And also, there's the development agreement that the town will be, have to approve as well. So both of those should be listed. If I'm on the right property, am I on the right property?
Yeah, this is the preliminary plat for the Wells estate that twenty-five, it's the.
Yes.
Thirteen twenty-nine.
Yes, okay, so, so you'll, you'll just wanna make those on your recommendation, whatever it is, if you're recommending approval, that those two conditions be on there.
And the developer agreement be completed before final plat.
Yeah, okay.
Is, is that correct, Sean, we wanna say that it needs to be completed by or before final plat?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so, I make a motion that we approve and pass on for approval to the town council. Item number eight for preliminary plat for AV dash thirteen twenty-nine on the condition that they have their will serve letter and/or their developer agreement on or before final plat.
Okay. Do we, uh?
We second that.
We second that, any further discussion on that? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? It's okay, alright, so that passes as well, thank you. Since it's not an agenda item, I would like somebody to make a motion that we ask the town council to remedy the, to work with Sean, with, with council, to find a remedy, if there is one, for this illegal lot split.
And for, for yard homes and for traffic laws.
I think we already had that looking there.
Well, we just.
No, but that was because of the parcel number.
Oh, yeah.
The last split, we were told was already remedied.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
As far as the town's concerned, now that's gotta make it to the county, but we'll let that be a staffing issue. So, but we do need to find a remedy for.
If there's one or.
If there is, if there is one necessary according to council.
Yeah.
Anybody, is that confusing enough, somebody wanna make a remedy like that?
I'll make a motion that we request that council will see through the parcel number system and with council, legal council, I'm up for it, it's changed.
For the lot split.
So, but on thirteen twenty-nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright. Any second to that, any further discussion on that? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope, alright. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all for your participation, appreciate it.
Hey, Alan, Alan.
Yeah.
I, I'm stating that earlier.
Could I, could I get? Yeah. If I could just get the planning commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could talk to the planning commission for a minute, so.
We have, I'm sorry, we need to talk to our attorney, that's why, just for a couple minutes.
Thank you, I'm sorry, this Zoom is kind of awkward in order to get your attention, but I wanted to talk to the chair and the planning commission. There have been a number of changes that have come into effect in Utah law that affect what you all do, you know, what you review and what you can't review, and just some changes to what towns can do as far as zoning goes. And so I think it really is time for another training session with all of you. And there's also annual training that needs to be done. So I would just, I just wanted to bring it up today, because it's hard to get everybody together, I know it's springtime and everybody's got cabin fever, but maybe sometime in May, we could find some time where we could do that and, and I could bore you for maybe an hour.
Oh, we'd love to be bored by you, absolutely. Is that the kind of thing we have to do in a, in a, in a public setting?
We should.
No.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean.
But it would be good, and, and Janet's been through this before, so, so she could tell you, but it's, it's usually a lot easier if we could have a setup where we could just have the table and I'll sit around the table and have a discussion, you know?
Okay, so I'm gonna ask Taylor, since we're having a special short meeting next week, I really don't wanna pack May full of extra meetings, so if we can, if we can try to keep our agenda as light as possible in May to allow for an hour or so of training at our next meeting, at our May meeting.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
So Sean, with May fifth, would you be able to get it together by then?
Actually, no, because May fifth, I'm just coming in from out of town. So, so we could, we could slide, we could slide it to June, if you would like to do that, or.
Yeah, Sean, is it fine if we just push the planning commission back?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, if you don't mind doing that, I appreciate, I don't want you to have to accommodate my schedule, but if you can do it back, back another week, that would work.
We don't have, the town council doesn't meet the week after us, right, there's two weeks.
There are two weeks.
So we have, we have a week in between there, we could do it, yeah.
So what day?
Great.
So.
October twelve, May twelve, if that works.
That work for you, Sean, the twelve?
That, yes, that works.
Okay, let's, we'll have Taylor put that on our agenda, we'll try to keep it as light as possible otherwise, so we're not here all night, but yeah, yeah, we're overdue for, we need to do our annual training anyway, so this'll, this'll kill two birds, so, awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you, okay, have a good night.
Thanks for your time tonight. No, we're gonna move our.